Good evening. Welcome to the workshop session of the mayor and city council of the City of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broome. We have a quorum present with council members McKenzie, Karn, and Gay, and I believe council member Arnold will be joining us shortly. So we're going to get to our first item on the workshop session?
Mayor, point of order. I got to request you, I want to amend this workshop meeting just slightly. City manager, oh, there you go, your hair grew back. I want us to have an executive session, a brief executive session before we start at the beginning of a workshop. So that's my motion to add that to the agenda.
For the purpose of?
Personnel. I'm sorry, litigation, litigation.
Mr. Denmark, we have not announced that we are doing executive session to the public?
We can amend the agenda when the council deems that necessary, consistent with the Georgia Open Meetings Act.
All right, and so it has to be necessary?
And mayor, I'm aware that we didn't publish this, but my apologies, but I think this is something that's very pertinent that we need to discuss. It'll probably only take less than 10 minutes, I'd imagine, to get things together, but I think in light of some of the recent things that have been going on, we need to talk about this briefly and come back out and resume our agenda, starting from the first item. So that's my motion.
There is a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussion of litigation. Is there a second?
Point of order, do we first need to amend the workshop session before we vote to go into ex-- don't we need to amend the, if I'm correct, my understanding of open meetings law is that it must be amended. We must amend the workshop session agenda to incorporate executive session, and then we can vote to go into executive session.
Okay, to cover ourselves.
Mr. Denmark, is that accurate?
Yes, I thought the motion from Councilman Karn was to amend the agenda to add an item--
That's exactly what it was.
Oh, I didn't hear him clearly. Okay.
That's exactly what it was.
Okay, so it was everything all in one? Is that what you're saying?
No ma'am, Councilman Karn, there would be two motions. The first motion would be to amend the agenda to add an item for executive session. If that motion were to be seconded and approved by the body, then it would be a second motion to go into executive session.
Okay, all right, then I just said what you said.
All right, you got my first motion, right Queenie?
Yes, sir.
Second by council member McKenzie?
Yeah, I second, yeah.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous.
All right, my second motion is to go into executive session for litigation.
Is there a second?
So moved.
Thank you, council member Arnold. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, that is unanimous. We'll enter into executive session at 6:07 PM.
Do we need our documents?
Do we have any documents?
No executive session documents?
All right, so we are back at 6:33. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Any discussion?
I've got discussion.
Councilmember Carr?
Not necessarily on this, but another agenda situation. Essentially, we have something that's on the...
We do need a vote.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Go on.
All those in favor of exiting executive session?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Were there executive session minutes as I was not present?
Yes.
Do we have regular executive session items for the end of the meeting, city manager?
No.
End of city manager?
No, we do not.
I'm just asking the answer room if it's all right.
No, we don't.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Were there executive session minutes?
Yes.
So do we need to make a motion to approve them?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous. Move on to item one.
Mayor, I wanted to have a little discussion on one particular item that's on the regular session agenda, actually. I had been asked to consider moving that to the workshop agenda. Now, while I don't necessarily agree with that, I think it's an item that I wanted to clear the air on and get some clarity for staff, as well as for the city manager who's not here right now, but just in general, obviously, the city manager will see this broadcast. So, but my intention for this was, I guess, pretty specific, more or less, and I guess if there's some... Let's see, I'm looking for the... Give me a second here. Essentially, my intention was to clarify this policy, because it seems to be a lot of mixed messages going on concerning it.
We don't know what you're talking about.
And it wasn't to change it. On the regular session, item, item seven U, I know that's on the regular session. Again, the reason why I wanted it on regular session is because apparently there have been so many mixed messages about this. My intention, and I was asking for a vote, but it was not to eliminate three estimates, but I wanted a vote to clean up and clear up any confusion and simply reinforce and clarify what is current.
Are we moving the item? Are we asking to move the item to discussion?
Are you moving it to for...
I want to be clear about what I want to make sure that we all have an understanding of what it is and clarify any confusion with it. So if it requires some discussion, I'd like to add it to the...
To the workshop?
I'd like to add it to the workshop.
Okay, all right.
Well, I'd like to add it to the workshop. Now, when we get to regular session, if we want to remove it, so be it, but I'd like a chance to discuss it and just kind of clarify it a bit. I think that's really something that we need to do anyhow, so.
So you want to add discussion of regular session, item seven U, to the workshop agenda? So that's item number four?
That is correct.
If I may, Councilman Carr, it's seven T. T is in Tom, not U.
Okay. Well, what I have here in my agenda packet, it says seven U, consideration in action on a request, and that's another issue we've been having. We get mixed up agenda packets and they have different lettering and...
Do you have a different?
You have different.
Mine is seven U as well.
Okay, so how about this? How about this?
Your packet says, what again, Mike, Mr. Hicks?
T is in Tom.
Yours says T. Do you have a U and a V? Or do you just have a U?
I have a U.
So U is the end of your packet. Okay, V is the end of our packets.
Stella, I'm gonna take a note of it.
So, all right.
There is no V on that what's been released.
There's no V on your packet?
You don't have a V on yours?
I'm looking online. No.
Well, there's a V on all of our packets. Is that right?
Yeah.
Does everybody up here have a V that has paper?
I have a V in mine. V is, no, we have a V, consideration in action on the utility. You have that?
No. The one Councilman Carr is referencing is T. So the issue was, there was three different packets that had to be kept that were, I had to keep redoing because things were added and subtracted without me knowing. So I had to keep reissuing agendas. So maybe you all have the second version instead of the third version that should have been printed.
Well, I know sometimes the reiterations of agenda items taken off. I guess, I don't know how, I think you probably want to make sure you're constantly touching base with the city manager and making sure before we send out this type of packet, or we send out this one electronically, or we print the physical ones, and just just make sure that we're all on the same page, so we all have the same stuff.
We are on the same page. He's the one that kept, that asked me to keep doing multiple versions.
Okay.
And I said the same thing, that it get convoluted. People will have one version when it's supposed to be version three. I did state that.
Well, what would be good, once we codify the final version, we could have gotten a new agenda. That way, we would know where we all at on the same page, so maybe next time we might want to look at that. But it's not a big, big deal, but even after the changes, let's get them modified.
But it is, because we don't all have the same agenda.
It's an issue. It's an issue, but I think we can resolve it if you all just get together and if you redo it five times, at the end of the day, a modified, new, final agenda with the labeling, it would be good for everybody. That way, we're all on the same page. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes? All right, good deal. Okay, so we'll make sure that once it doesn't happen.
So I'm still confused. Right, because I don't know, after all of that... Which agenda? The question is, how many items do we have on the agenda? Is our agenda going to V?
Seven U.
Okay, so then, if you could, because that's not the agenda that we have.
Right.
Can we get copies of the agenda that we need to be working with, if you don't mind?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, now, no one removed V off the agenda, did they?
Yes, there were multiple versions of the agenda. There was the, that council, that, no, sorry, that the city manager had removed, and so it messes up the flow. So it maybe was a V in version one, and continue on, there was a U. You're saying?
So you're saying the city manager himself removed V off of the agenda?
Yes, the agenda's done on Wednesday. I came in on Thursday, and he told me there was a few items that had to be removed, that I had no knowledge that were to be removed until I got here on Thursday.
Did he say the reason why?
No.
Did you talk to him about this, right?
Councilman Carr?
I did.
Please, don't do that.
I can follow his direction, so.
Let's not go there.
We just need the correct agenda.
I want to discuss.
We just need, we just need a, wait, everybody, hold on.
That's all.
Ms. Brown has the correct agenda. She has a printed copy.
Right.
She's going to hand it out to everybody. So it's my understanding that Councilmember Carr wants to add a discussion of...
Thank you.
The consideration of requests for invoices totaling $10,000 or less, I don't need one, I've got it right here, thank you, shall not require three estimates. Is that the, is that the agenda item you wish to discuss to add to workshop?
That's correct.
All right, is there a second?
Question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Discussion, Councilmember Gay?
Well, it's 6:42, and regular session starts at 7:30, and we haven't heard from any of the three presenters. So how does this work time-wise? And is it off the agenda? So there won't be any action taken on it? It's just for discussion only?
Yeah, he's moving it to the workshop for discussion only.
So what about the people?
Hold on, I'm unclear about that. I thought he said he wanted to add it for discussion. But are you removing it from the regular session?
I'm not. What I wanted to do is add it to the workshop for discussion. After the discussion on, with the workshop, I think we can determine whether or not, you know...
But we get to discuss when the item is...
Then it just needs to stay where it is.
Even if we do add it, Mayor, I still try to understand how we find this by 7:30.
Want it to stay where it is.
All right. Well, all right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
All right.
What are we voting on? Adding it, adding it to, adding it to the workshop agenda for discussion.
I'm fine if we can discuss it where it is on regular session. I'm fine with that.
Well, then we need to do that when we get to regular session.
Okay, let's do that then. Okay, I'm fine with that.
All those in favor of adding it to the workshop agenda for discussion?
Let's just see.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Councilmember McKenzie, what is your vote?
I, I'm not, I don't understand what the conversation was for. What are we doing? What is, Councilman, did Councilman Carr change his motion?
I think the motion died, because no, if we're going to be, if we're going to discuss it in the regular session, then we should leave it where it is.
There's a motion and a second. I'm calling for the vote. If y'all want it on there for the workshop, great. If you don't, vote against it.
I vote no.
Hold on, hold on. Councilmember McKenzie, what is your vote?
No, I mean, this was his idea, I mean, so this is like a waste of time.
If we can discuss it...
Councilmember Carr, what is your vote?
If we can discuss it on the regular agenda, I'm fine with that. My vote is no.
Councilmember Arnold?
No.
Councilmember Gay?
No.
The motion fails. The first item on the workshop is Foster Foundation?
Yes, presentation by Foster Foundation Incorporated to hold Campaign College Park 2024 event on July 20 of 2024, from 10:00 a.m., 10:30 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. at Bill Badger Stadium. This is a request from Queenie, Deputy City Clerk. This event is held in Ward One.
Hey, good afternoon, City Councilman and Mayor. How you guys doing?
Hey.
Welcome new members of City Council.
Good to see you, Josh.
And existing members. How you guys doing today?
All right.
I'm just excited to be back. We took a year off partnering with more foster care agencies in College Park, impacting more youth. The first year was phenomenal. Thank you to all the council members and mayors that did come out. I mean, the support was outrageous, and we just want to do bigger and better this year, partner again, and bring out more youth.
Questions for Mr. Wilson? Hearing none. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a good evening.
Thanks, Josh.
Item number two, a presentation by Mercer Health and Benefit Group for the Health Insurance Renewal Plan, July 1, 2024 to June 30 of 2025. This item is from Krista Gilbert, interim Director of GMA Resources.
I can barely hear you. Look, if we could turn her up a little bit.
I'll yell.
Can we turn, can we turn her up some? Maybe it's just me that can't hear it that well. Is everybody else good? All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We, I have Mercer Health and Benefits Group here to present about, on our health insurance renewal, and Ms. Rosalyn Britt will be giving a presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I believe that you all have a packet, each one of you, where we have summarized the results of our renewal discussions, as well as a marketing effort. We did review as part of our analysis, in addition to your current Aetna renewal proposals from Anthem and Kaiser. Anthem submitted proposals for dental, vision, and medical, and Kaiser submitted proposals for medical only. We did, in conjunction with your renewal for your life and disability coverages, also review a proposal for coverage with New York Life, in conjunction with the Anthem proposal.
Excuse me.
In conjunction with the Anthem proposal, because they do have some credits that are available if you combine those two coverages. We did also, basically, Anthem presents the best option to the city absent consideration of first year premium holidays. Anthem has the best discounts, again, when combining life and disability. And let me back up. Anthem, in conjunction with the standard, actually provides a bundling discount. You all are currently with New York Life, and so there is no bundling discount with New York Life. So when we looked at all of the numbers from a financial position, Anthem's or Aetna's renewal called for a, about an $846,000 increase, so about 16.8% over what you guys are currently paying today. When we look at the Anthem offer with the bundling discounts, they produced a financial difference of about $31,000, so less than 1% increase. When we looked at Kaiser, keep in mind Kaiser's not on an apples-to-apples basis, because they don't offer the dental and vision. And so when we look at the strictly medical costs, we did see that Kaiser presented a less favorable option than when we looked at Anthem. So I'll pause here and see if there are any questions.
Any questions?
I've got a few. Thank y'all for coming. On your packet page 12, with the executive summary, it says here on the third line, Kaiser submitted a proposal for medical only. I guess my question is, is why? And what is trending? Is anything trending with dental and vision? You know, is diabetes behind this? Is there a surge of something going on? Is that a trend that we're going to be looking at in the future?
Yeah, so to answer your first question about Kaiser does not actually offer dental or vision.
Can't hear you.
So if you decided to make a move to...
We can barely hear you up here.
I'm sorry. Kaiser does not offer dental and vision, and so if you made the selection of Kaiser for medical, then you would have to have a, another vendor for your dental and vision.
Okay.
And then I believe you were asking a question as to on your dental, what's driving that dental increase? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it's increase in utilization, increase in actual claim cost as it relates to your dental services.
Okay.
And I think you see, if you look... And I think you see, if you look at the dental results, everybody was pretty consistent in terms of the projected increase for dental.
I mean, and I like the savings that Anthem appears to be providing here. I've never heard of Anthem. I mean, are they a new player on the market?
It's Blue Cross and Blue Shield.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
They're not a new player, they're just kinda like Truist and Suntris.
Exactly.
Okay, okay, that explains why I have never heard of this outfit. Okay, 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 so that explains that, all right.
Any other questions?
I'll let someone else go.
I had a question, it wasn't, it wasn't part of your quote, but it was asked, I asked the director. Would it be possible to just look at not what the cost would be to insure part-timers?
So we did not include that in our analysis, but yes, that is something that we can, we can revisit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, packet page 16, where you have the plans, the comparisons. So what does Anthem's, excuse me, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Anthem's, what does their network look like compared to, say, Kaiser, someone that we've had in the past?
Yeah, so.
Particularly in metro Atlanta here.
So Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, has one of the largest networks in the state and in the locales. So when you look at what we call disruption rates, with the providers that your employees are utilizing today, and we compare that to Anthem, we see very little disruption, meaning those providers that are in network today would be, continue to be in network. Because of Kaiser's model, which is what we would call a staff model, HMO, the network, the Kaiser network proper is really significantly less than what we would see with Aetna today and as well Anthem. So when we looked at disruption, we did actually see a fair amount of disruption, and that's what is detailed on the page.
Okay, would it be safe to say that with Anthem, we will, our employees will have more in-network providers than Kaiser or the other outfit?
Yes, absolutely.
Could you codify that into numbers so we can show them, hey, Kaiser had this many in-network within, you know, the metro area, this one has that many? Does that make sense?
And that is actually in the disruption analysis, so we looked at a snapshot, so the top 50 most utilized providers. And so what we saw was, of the top 50 utilized providers, and so we did it in a snapshot and we did it in aggregate, of the 50 most utilized providers today, 50 of those are gonna be in the Anthem network. We look at Kaiser in the HMO, 16 of them are in-network and 34 of them are out-of-network. So that gives you an idea of the magnitude of the potential disruption.
Okay, okay, so City Manager, I wanna figure out with Krista how we can show that simply to employees, hey, we're getting more coverage, there are more in-network providers going with this group, Anthem, than what we had before. And simplify it that way they can understand, you're getting more options, right? And not only that, according to this, if this is right, we're getting more options for significantly less money. And I added the 800,000, and I saw another hundred something, or so close to a million dollars in savings. Is that what I'm reading here? I saw the 800,000, and then I saw savings of, what was it, 199 somewhere that I see? What page?
Yeah, so if you're, if you're looking on that first page, the 846 increase compared to the $31,000 increase, that's correct. And then there would be some additional credits that are available, so I think that's what you're talking about. So half-month premium holiday, and then some other credits that you can, you can utilize for the benefit of the employees, wellness credits and the likes.
In addition to that increased networks, I just want a one-page also to show that cumulative savings that we have going with this one. So we're saving money for more in-network, you know, accessibility. I think that's, that's something that we wanna talk about, right? I mean, that sounds like a good deal to me. That's all I had.
Question.
Councilmember Gay?
The vision and dental stay the same under Aetna?
I'm sorry?
The dental and vision stays the same that we currently have under Aetna and NP?
So, no, the vision would stay the same, but dental is a slight difference in that you have a, as well as medical, you have a DHMO offerings, so an HMO offering. With Anthem, you would have PPO offerings, meaning you would have out-of-network coverage, whereas today you don't have out-of-network coverage.
For dental?
You would still have a high and a low option under both medical and dental.
Okay.
Any last thing? I just wanted to know in terms about trends, in terms of how we're doing. I know you guys assess, assessed everything, the claims before you came in and made a bid, I guess, right? And I guess Krista can speak to some of this. How we're looking health-wise overall? I know we've had our broker come in and talk about some of the claims that we've had. I know they, they don't, obviously can't mention names, but they've had, there've been some years where we said, well, you know, we had those three bypasses and that, that, that knocked, you know, knocked us down. I just wonder how we're looking health-wise in general? Are we better? Are we, are we worse? Are we, are we in the median? Where are we?
Yeah, I think in general, I would say it's probably where you have been in the past historically. So you do still have some of those ongoing claims and some of those ongoing conditions, so your cancer, your diabetes, things that, you know, we would see in the typical general population. And so, short answer is, what was prevalent is still prevalent. I don't know that it has gotten any worse, if that makes sense.
Well, with you all coming on board, you know, we're doing this Healthy Cities Initiative with Fulton County, healthy looks good on you, we're trying to promote good health and some wellness initiatives and these type of things. So I don't know what kind of initiatives your company might be able to throw in the hat to help us out and help us reduce some claims, but y'all got any tricks of the trade? I would say bring them on in here, because we want a healthier workforce.
And so that, that does lead me to another point. Anthem is giving you guys $50,000 to support the wellness initiatives that, that you come up with, so things like discounts or free gym memberships, onsite wellness events, so that $50,000 can be used in support of those initiatives.
And that is a big plus, because Chief, Fulton County only gave us 40,000. Thank you Fulton County, don't get me wrong, but this is gonna add a lot to bolster that initiative. And, you know, there was a lot of kickback and feedback about looking at new providers, but I think we see why it's good to put stuff out. We got almost a million in savings and extra benefits, so again, it's a good thing, so I'll just leave it at that.
Any further discussion? So in regard to our current coverage of Aetna, switching to Anthem has all the same providers, those top 50 providers are in the same network.
Correct.
So essentially, when you were talking about disruption, there is limited to almost no disruption for what we are current, what our, what our employees are currently utilizing in terms of health insurance benefits, correct?
That's correct.
All right.
All right, just a final question for, just for the director. When do the employees renew? Since you sound like you got us a good carry, can we get renewed at our regular June?
We will have open enrollment during, in the June month, maybe the second month, I mean, second week of June, we'll have open enrollment.
Okay.
All right, any additional questions? Hearing none, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number three in the workshop, discussion to establish a utility customer roundup/donation program to assist City of College Park residential utility customers in need of financial assistance. This discussion is sponsored by Councilman Joe Carn, Ward 2.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I would like to discuss the Let's Power Up Our Neighbors program. It's a donation program where our customers can contribute any amount to assist fellow City of College Park residents with their utility, utility bills. Administered by the Customer Service Department, 100% of donations will remain in the city, and it will be managed by the Grants Administrator to aid in those needs. We gave you all a PowerPoint. If you have any specific questions, I would be more than happy to answer those for you.
All right, any questions for Mr. Scott?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the program is going to be managed by the Grants Administrator that we don't have yet, right?
We currently have a contract employee, Melissa Lamore, who's assisted with the LaHeep Grant, and in the past she's assisted with the CDBG Utility Assistance Program.
So it's LaHeep, it's going to be under LaHeep?
No. She's, her, her contract title is Grant Administrator.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so she's assistant in administering those grants as far as issuing, assisting the applicants with their application, and basically submitting those to the county or, I believe it's, what is that group name? FACA, and submitting those applications to FACA for consideration.
Okay, all right.
So she will be also assisting with the, the Power Up Your Neighbors program.
Okay, all right, makes sense, because my next question was going to be whether or not if we were gonna have to hire someone to manage this.
No, she's currently a contract employee.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Councilmember Gay?
So, anyone or resident or utility customer can donate any amount to this program?
Yes, sir, on the web app, the amount is open to any amount. As they walk up on the cashiering side, it would be more of a roundup issue, because those are gonna be quick transactions. Customers, they come with sometimes the exact amount of their bill, whereas our established customers that pay online, they will have more time to look at and decide if they wanna pay up, and we, we don't wanna limit them in that manner.
Now, does this affect the donor's bill? Or do you have, or do we now have to have a separate accounting for donors? You can't, I don't wanna see this affect somebody's bill. They say I gave $100 to this program, and you're doing accounting on their billing cycle. Is this gonna be completely separate?
We're in the process of getting that taken care of as we speak, getting all of that structured.
Oh. And then my other question is, I run into a problem in my ward, when I give stuff to people, it become a problem of who should get it? How do you go, I mean, I see you got a, I see you got an income level, but that doesn't tell you who you're gonna give it to. Say you got 500 utility customers under, under the first income, and then 500, then how do you know who to give it to? First come, first served?
Yes, sir, and this is, it's a combination of multiple avenues that we have. Ms. Brown, she just spoke of the LaHeep program, and this will just be another avenue to assist the customers. So as that grant administrator, she has customers requesting needs, this will be another bucket that she would have to pick from.
One last thing.
Yes, sir.
Do you think it makes sense to get the money in, see how much money you have at any, like a quarterly basis, before you start giving it out? Because that Jack Longino scholarship was so convoluted. I got, I hate to see this become that convoluted. Can we get this a little bit more ironed out, and then bring it back with a little bit more detail?
I think we have a tremendous governing body, management team, and I think with everybody getting together, giving input, we can make this a tremendous asset to our citizens.
I don't agree. The question was, can you bring it back as it's more well-thought-out? It seems you're in a kinda conceptual stage right now.
Can we get clarity on exactly what you're requesting be ironed out?
Well, it doesn't, I can't figure it right now, and as a customer, I mean, it's a good idea, but I don't, I don't see how it's gonna work. I need to know how it's gonna work specifically. What, for example, he just said, we're still working on how to make it work with, he just said he hadn't quite thought it all through. Are you gonna?
It works just like the grant does. There's a pot of money, first come, first serves, serve. We have, we have the LaHeep Grant. If the applicant comes in and applies for the LaHeep Grant and they don't qualify, we'll look to see if they qualify for the Power Up Your Neighbors Grant, well, donation program. So they would be filling, they would fill out pretty much the same application. If they've received the LaHeep Grant within the 12 months, they cannot receive additional funding from LaHeep, so they can receive the funding from this donation.
For me, it's a great idea. I'm glad Councilman Carn sponsored it, I'm glad that you worked on it. I would like it brought back before we administer it, okay?
Yes, but what would you like to see?
I can't really decide right this moment, but I will send out an email with more information, with more questions.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question.
Councilmember McKenzie?
I just wanna say that, well, I wanna thank Councilman Carn for championing this. I wanna thank you, Mr. Scott, for your presentation. Of course, you and I have been working over the couple, couple, few years, and I do realize that this is a great need for our, our citizens, our residents. So I just wanna thank you for, for being thoughtful in this way. We do have, on a regular basis, I have residents that are in need, and I think this is a wonderful way that our city can, can give back, and it allows our, our, our residents who have to be able to help those that, that are in a, in a critical situation. So I just wanted to say thank you, it's just a comment.
And Mayor, does this?
Councilmember Gay, go right ahead.
Does this infringe on the gratuity by any way?
No, sir, it's private citizen to private citizen.
So we can pay portions of a citizen's utility bill with public money?
As I understand the program, the city would not be paying it. Citizens would be donating to a fund, and then.
But you told us as soon as a dime hit the city's public money.
Yeah, but it's not, if it's designated and earmarked for this purpose, it would be okay.
Okay, remember you said that, okay?
Certainly.
Any other questions?
I got a couple of things.
Councilmember Carn, go right ahead.
William, Althea, thank y'all for your efforts on this. So in the interim, Melissa will administer this until we get a permanent Grants Manager. Just wanted to clear that up.
Well, the Grant Manager.
A Grant Administrator, on the college.
We're not in the process of hiring for a Grant Administrator. There's the.
Well, if we, if we codify things with the next budget after July, if we do have a Grants Administrator coming in, that, that'll transfer to that individual?
Okay, I wanna, I want to make sure we're talking about two different positions, because I know there's a Grant Manager/Administrator in the Executive Department, that this person will not administer this grant. That's separate.
So who would?
Melissa.
Okay, if, so you're saying if we hire an individual, separate Grants Administrator, which we're considering?
Yes.
You're saying they shouldn't manage?
No, because.
Okay, so it stays up in finance?
Correct.
Got it, okay, that answers that question. Obviously, I think it's a great project, but no project is great if residents do not know about it. Understand, you've been coordinating with Communications on this.
And Paymentis, they, William does have.
Cameron here?
She was, she's.
She's been in and out, it looks like she's stepped up.
If somebody can, well, maybe she's, get back in here. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're also partnering with Paymentis, and they have provided some marketing documents for us to review. We will be sharing those with you as well.
Okay, well, having a great program, again, is great, but we gotta have great communications on this, we've gotta get the word out. There's far too many residents that have no idea about the LaHeep program, that there is money available for utility assistance. We've gotta make sure we do a better job in getting that word out. Again, we've got a transient population, so getting it out just once isn't gonna get it. Every six months, we really need to do a push to let people know these funds and monies are available. Last thing I'd say, I picked this idea up, I think, from either this year, the beginning of this year, the beginning of last year, one of the NLC conferences. And I say that. And I say that because traveling pays off, and we make sure that we get to as many of these things as we can, it's not for not. You get best practices from other cities, so you don't have to turn around and reinvent the wheel again. There are the outfits that have been doing these different things, and I think since the beginning of this year, we've been bringing some new and innovative projects here. Lahip is one, this is another. I think first come, first served obviously makes sense. I don't see any need to wait to implementing this, in my opinion. This is needs-based, and I don't think it can wait. And I don't think any of our residents want to say, wait a while for this. It's folks that need that help right now that are close to getting cut off. My thing, I trust y'all's expertise, Althea, you, along with the City Manager, William, I say get the funds in and get them to our residents that need it the most, and let's get this thing going as quickly as possible. I don't think any resident that needs that help wants us to wait, but that's just my opinion. So I'm excited about it, and I'm sure our residents will be excited once they realize they can get some of this sorely needed help. So I want to, I want to get it rolling as quickly as we can, quickly and responsibly. So cross our Ts and dot Is, and I want to make sure this thing gets moving as fast as possible.
And just for clarity, we did test it for about three, four days, and some customers did donate. We have since refunded those funds. So we did test it on our website, and the customers were donating. At that time, they were paying their bills.
Now, now we're talking.
And then also, just to answer your question, Greystone has been assisting us with this as well, because they've been, they have a similar program that's been in place for over 10 years. So they're, they're willing to help us as well get this off the ground.
Okay, I mean, that, that sounds, I mean, there's an urgency in now. People need this now. Y'all keep something in mind, it's June, pretty much. June is just about here, because after the 15th of the month, my month is gone. We're six months in, y'all, and we promised changes up here, and we are doing and working towards those changes. But half the year is just about gone. The urgency of now is important, it's very important, and I don't, I don't want to wait if we don't have to wait, and I understand y'all have been working diligently. So again, let's get it right, but let's, I'm ready to roll this thing on out here. Okay, so...
Any other questions? Mr. Scott, would you envision a cap to the, to the assistance?
Especially with online, the online payments.
Could you turn that off, please?
With the online payments, because you have people like Coca-Cola, we have the data center, things of that sort. If they see this as a win-win for them in their program and initiatives, they could donate as much as possible, so there's no cap.
Oh, no, I didn't mean to donations, I apologize. I meant to, to the assistance for individual residents. Say someone's got a $2,000 bill versus someone who might have, you know, might be $150 in their, would there be a cap to the assistance for individual accounts?
Yeah, I think we definitely should set some limit on it, maybe 200, or like Lahip, they do a max at 500, just so that we can get as many people involved in it, 200, 300, something like that, I think would be...
Well, Althea, and, you know, in my head, I had said, and this is just, this was just my thought on it when, when we were talking about it, I think this would be a one, one time a year per resident with a, with a, some kind of a reasonable cap. That was just my opinion.
We would probably use the Lahip model, which is the $400 to $500 cap, and you can only apply once every 12 months.
That sounds, yeah.
Any other questions?
No, but I, I...
Councilmember Bernal, go ahead.
I just have a comment. I think that it's a great program as well. I agree with Councilman Gay that I would like for it to be more refined, too, to make sure that we have everything documented. Of course, we said we're going to use the same application, but also have whatever those parameters, those requirements, the criteria, all outlined, then for it to come back for us to vote on.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Arnold, could we, could we commit to them bringing it back the next meeting, two weeks from now, and sharpening things up and getting it together?
Well, clearly, it's going to be based on how long it takes for them to get the materials together and present everything for us to see the exact process that the citizens will go through, both the donations along with those who are applying for the funds, so that we can see what that process is looking like before we make a decision.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Would y'all be ready, possibly by two weeks, to walk us through the step-by-step process where everyone can see it? And the reason why I ask that is because I think it's a priority in summer times here, and summer rates have kicked in already, so...
Would the end of June be...
The second meeting in June?
June 17.
June 17.
June 17.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, that ends our workshop. We will see everyone in about 14 minutes at 7:30.